I'd like to open the Board of Education meeting for September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Welcome to the BOE administrators, students, and community members here and who are at home. Please note that the Board President Doug Sontime is unable to join us this meeting, at this meeting. I'll start by turning it over to Dr. MacJersey for his announcements and updates.
Okay, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Thumbs up? Great. Well, as need be, we're all wearing masks and occasionally we'll have to drop those for water and all the rest. But we're operating just like our students do every day, and I think doing very, very well with it, and all staff in the building. So I think it's an important part of what we have to be as in-person as much as possible. So I appreciate us playing by the rules here. So I'm going to provide an update on a couple items. Part of that is to queue up what Maureen's going to share with you. Then I'm going to flow into district highlights, and I'm actually going to do a little bit there, but then hand that over to Melissa. So we're going to keep flowing here for you, the board. And then she's going to segue quite smoothly into her curriculum instruction update. And then she'll hand it off to Maureen. And then after all these updates, I think it will help set the stage for the discussion going forward. So in terms of first, under updates, we have COVID-19 update. I think there's been a lot flowing out to the community from me, very specific information that you as a board have been receiving as well. I think it's quite thorough, quite specific. I would update you just on a few things that aren't in those materials. As Maureen's going to speak to, we actually are starting now to get pretty solid numbers on the percentage rate of vaccinations amongst our staff. Give a big assist on that to the new governor, because with the mandated trade between either vaccination or testing, we actually were with great accuracy able to find out who is vaccinated or not. Now, I'm proudly vaccinated, but because I'm in Connecticut, I wasn't in the record. So I went hustling to the Xerox machine and I handed it off so that the tall guy isn't being a hypocrite, at least in terms of my promoting vaccination. But Maureen came to me and said, "Well, you're not in the records." And I said, "Well, that's because I'm a Connecticut resident." But anyway, that problem's been fixed. But here's the point. We know right now that we're at worst, at worst, about eighty-five percent vaccinated. I am in that non-vaccinated category, and there are some other people like me. I am vaccinated, remember? So, but the point is the worst number we're going to have is about eighty-five, eighty-six percent. And so now that we have solid incentive to get that number, have that stated, which I think's really important, because I think we're actually probably up in the nineties for any of those personnel, staff, who are most directly around our students. Now, students age twelve and up, we don't know that. We can find that out. But I think right now, I just want to update you on that COVID-19 piece. You did see in the September tenth COVID manual, management manual, you saw a little more detail than before, more footnoting. And that was really responding to some parents, particularly some parents with public health and medical expertise, who in a very good, respectful way were saying to me, Superintendent, "We hear that, but what's your source?" Well, our source is always the Department of Health in New York, the Department of Ed in New York, and they tie back to the CDC. And actually with our medical advisors, I was able to draw a source link on a couple things. And particularly, the questions were to get out of quarantine card free if you're vaccinated, and to get out of quarantine free if you're wearing a mask. So it was a nice moment of a set of questions coming in from parents to sort of say, "Can you verify better?" And they were actually quite assured after we provided that extra detail. So trying to keep the COVID-19 communications as clean and tight as possible. But there are times now, given the stakes are high, that we need to sort of really show the documentation path. I'm going to shift a bit now to school opening update. I'm going to say a couple things here on the positive. Most of you know to me, I would be a really positive guy. I was stopped going over to a JV soccer game a few minutes ago, and a staff member said, "Thanks for bringing the positive." Well, I am going to be open about some challenges we have after the positive. So I am doing walkabouts, as I like to call them, and if you can find the country I pulled that from, we'll get you a free soda pop. But I am doing walkabouts. It's a way for me to get some energy as the superintendent, and to see things. And I was at some of the doors greeting students, and I was paying attention to who said hello or not. But Friday afternoon, I was also able to get out and watch out of my left eye the boys varsity, and my right eye the girls varsity, because they were situated on Burke, so I could see both. And they were both great results. But more important to me was just the great spirit that was underway there, and field hockey and all the rest. So the walkabouts, if it brought me there, I'm looking to walk about to get to some arts and theater and all the rest. Now, here's the tricky news. We've been giving you updates on Reynolds Field. That was certainly the remnants of Tropical Storm Ida. Some of the districts in the region, you know, were quite substantially affected. We have some districts in New Jersey without schools. We have some nearby without schools. So we were very fortunate. However, Reynolds Field did receive a lot of damage. And Maureen's going to speak to that in her update for you. The other thing is, I, as superintendent, I expressed that to some of you Friday. I'm not at all happy with how the transportation is going. We work in a consortium with several other districts. It's not going well. We have been working, and Maureen has been working very actively to address that problem. It's still going to take a little bit, but you're going to, in a few minutes, get a very thorough update from Maureen on the source and issues there. I've said very clearly, because we're in a collaboration, so we have to work very carefully with the other districts involved. But once the dust settles, and I think this week we'll start to finally fix some things, and our top business officials had to spend a lot, a lot of time on this. But I think it's really important that when the dust settles, with our sister and brother districts, we figure out what happened, so it doesn't happen again. There is a labor market issue at work here called driver-bus shortages, bus driver shortages. But anyway, we're going to, Maureen will give you a little more detail on that. So let me shift now for district highlights that Melissa's going to share, and then she'll pass the baton right along. And I think if, Board, you want to hold questions until you get through at least another step, hopefully it'll help.
So I have the pleasure of sharing some bright spots this evening on behalf of the principals. So on behalf of Lou Adipietro, Hastings High School opened its doors on September first and welcomed five hundred thirty-four students to in-person instruction. There was a happiness that was infectious. Our seniors welcomed students back into the lobby with fanfare, and then it was back to business. Lou shared, "Our staff and students were thrilled to be back and in person. You could see all the smiles from behind their masks. It was an awesome day." On behalf of Jennifer Spirelli, middle school principal, Farragut Middle School opened their doors on the first day of school to five hundred seventeen students, fifth through eighth graders. It was a rainy morning, but no one seemed to mind the rain. Students were eager to see their teachers and meet up with friends. These past few days of school, teachers and students have been participating in getting-to-know-you activities and team bonding challenges. Jennifer shared, "At the heart of FMS are enduring relationships and bonds, which our faculty and staff build with our students and their families." On behalf of Amy Casas, Hillside School is happy again, as our five hundred sixty-two students return to a full day of school. Students have been engaged in getting-to-know-you activities, building community, and learning routines and procedures. The joy of elementary school is evident, the hum of interactive learning in classrooms, the cheers from collaborative group success, and the laughter outside during lunch and recess as friends reunite and new friends are made. Amy shared, "Our theme this year is we all put our different pieces together to make something stronger and more beautiful. There's no doubt that we build something amazing this year with our hard-working students, dedicated staff, and supportive community." I also wanted to add that I had the pleasure of kicking off the first day of school, welcoming students at Hillside to the building. I did notice that a few cried, but the children were able to quickly reassure those parents, and they were okay. So we are looking forward to a wonderful school year ahead. And now for the update. So Jeanette Coker, Director of School Counseling, and I have been working together on the monitoring and support of the social and emotional well-being of students throughout the K-12 system. We've begun logistical preparations for a screening process, which will entail the use of a series of questions administered through a panorama education resource. Jeanette is also in the process of arranging for mental health first aid training for teachers and for aides. This training is designed to help members of the faculty recognize students in distress and to understand what to do to support them in the moment. Finally, I met with Laura Sullivan, Director of Special Education, around providing crisis prevention and intervention training for teachers and aides. We're also preparing to administer the STAR Renaissance Universal Screener in the elementary school and middle school. Students in grades K through eight during a window of an assessment that's going to span the last weeks of September and early October. Grades K through nine, because nine will be receiving that information as students are moving up. Grades K through nine teachers of mathematics and ELA, special educators, MTSS providers, that's our multi-tiered system of supports. MTSS team members and ENL teachers participated in a training around the use of this STAR resource during our second superintendents' conference day. And the focus areas of the workshop included understanding what the assessments are, why they should be administered, and how they're different from other assessments; understanding how this resource assessment scale connects student performance with learning progressions, resources, standards, and other scores students may be receiving; strategies for administering the screener with fidelity so that there's consistency across the grades and across classes; and also exploring data. Middle school mathematics. So the implementation of big ideas is now underway in grades six through eight in middle school. The teachers and I worked closely together to ensure that all of the big ideas resources were in hand, that all the manipulative kits arrived to the classrooms. There's been a really good, positive energy and great team collaboration with this curriculum resource. I want to say thank you to Christian Bedoul and publicly recognize him. He's our network administrator for all of the support with any accompanying digital resources. So although it's primarily physical resources that folks are working with, there is a digital component involved as well. And then finally, we have a very important science research update from Melissa Chandrov. In August, two students from the science research class had their work published in the journal Developmental Cell. Anya von Hunstroggen, class of two thousand nineteen and currently at Yale University, and Ivy Meninger, class of two thousand twenty and currently at Boston College, both worked in the lab of Dr. Samuel Seedy at the ICANN School of Medicine at Mount Sinai, New York. The article titled "Fanci Functions as a Repair Apoptosis Switch in Response to DNA Cross-Links" was published on August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and Anya and Ivy contributed to the work, which helped to describe a mechanism by which cells decide their fate, repair, or self-removal after DNA damage. So this is a very big deal for them and for Hastings and for science research. And I'd like to publicly congratulate all that have been involved.
Okay, I'm going to go to the front to present. I created slides for each of the updates.
Well, Maureen, just to clarify where on the agenda, we thought we're now, we actually have moved into three B. So this is a series of updates, just so you're clear on the wheel.
Yes, so you can follow on the board as well. Okay, so can everybody hear me?
You can leave.
So as Dr. MacJersey had mentioned, one of the largest challenges we've had beginning of school this year has been our transportation. And that is both for in-district as well as out-of-district. You know, tonight we'll kind of give you some updates and kind of bring you back to some of the challenges that we've been finding coming into this year, and where we are in the process, and, you know, what we think of the next step. So that has definitely been an issue, again, for both our in-district and out-of-district students. So just coming, just to give you a little background information about the number of students that are transported in Hastings. Currently, we have six hundred and seventy-four students that ride in-district transportation. We have seventy-five students going out-of-district to approximately thirty-seven schools. Currently, and we've been in this model for as long as I can remember, we have a shared transportation service model, and in that, we're partnered with Orsley, Duxbury, Irvington, and Edgemont. The operation is based in Orsley School District, and we do share the resource, and we oversee that program. Coming into this year, these were the challenges that primarily contributed to a lot of the issues we're having. First and foremost was, we had a new interim director that was just recently brought in during the summer. He had unexpected retirement of the well-serving director, who had been in that role for over twenty-five years. Part of the issue with getting a director is, unlike hiring teachers, directors of transportation or civil servants have to be hired off the civil services. So the amount of people available to do this job, it's a very huge job, and it's also not, we do have a process we have to follow. So after a bit of time, we were able to secure a person out of retirement who came to assist Orsley running our consortium. During the same time, an assistant director that had been hired in the consortium had moved on right around the time, right prior to the time where the longtime director was suddenly retired. And it really was from a Friday night, and then he wasn't there anymore, and it was very sudden. And then in addition to that, it was further compounded, in our case, with a county-wide, I would actually say it's a countrywide rather than county-wide, driver monitor shortage due to the COVID pandemic. I don't know if many of you may have seen, there was an article in Journal News. There's actually been articles in the Daily News as well, just speaking about this, because it is a challenge that everyone is facing right now. I mean, not that it matters what's happening with the districts, but I do have a listserv in Westchester County. This, I know right now, Mariner has short sixty-five drivers for their operations. So they have sixty-five students on different routes that are not being transported at all. So it's been extremely challenging for us. And in addition, because we've had to combine some routes where we have been able to, some of the routes have been extended temporarily, while we're trying to kind of get our way out of the situation. So these are the current most pressing issues that we're dealing with, in particular this week. We have three of our out-of-district runs as of today that were still without drivers. These students, as I said, at this point, we have to add them to existing routes, because currently they're, I mean, the parents have been transporting these students to and from school every day since some of their schools have started back when our school began. And this is occurring because there's a bus available, but no driver to do that route. And unfortunately, if that's, if we have to do that, because I don't believe that the parents can continue to transport their children, that will temporarily then extend some of the routes that are in that area. So we'll be kind of creating some additional problems, but we cannot not have transportation for these students. The second, from that second, but another issue that we're currently addressing is we have a route that traditionally is going to Eagleville School that for a number of years, or at least to my understanding, was a bus just for that school, because we have quite a few of our residents, students who attend that school. And by combining that route, it just makes the route itself extremely long and for our students going to school in the morning. Unfortunately, I think with the new director, there was some miscommunication that they had two students at Hastings going to another school on that route. And because of the start time of that school, in addition to additional pickups, it really created a situation there where that route is far too long. And again, there was never that intention to have those children on that route. So I, you know, in speaking, that was one that I, about six o'clock tonight, got an assurance that it was, that they were, they found another bus for those two students by combining them with another district, the Edgemont, and that they will have that fixed by the end of this week. We had our occupational education students who attend the tech center in Bosse. We have three students that currently attend, one in the morning, two in the afternoon. There has not been a bus for them. These children, many of them, need this as a part of their graduation requirement. And I know that in the Quad Village, those students in that program began last week have been transported thus far to that, to that program. And now I'm told that tomorrow they did, they're using a bus. And I don't believe that, they may even have to pick them up a little bit earlier in order to make this work, maybe in the afternoon, until they have a full-time bus driver for that route. But again, I know, because I've been speaking to Lou Adipietro today, I've been having him also reach out to his counterparts to see, you know, if that, I mean, I've been speaking to people, but they will also not have a town. But I was told that tomorrow there will be a bus here for those students. The in-district routes were significant as well. A lot of our new students to the system were not routed. They did not have a bus, many kindergarten parents, a lot of people without any form of transportation to get their students to school, that the children were not routed. In addition, some of the routes, children that were added, I mean, the kindergarten students of existing families on routes were put on different buses, which also created a significant challenge for our families. So those also are being actively addressed. And again, as the days go on, they're being rectified. I know all the students now that were new to the system are on buses, to my understanding, because I've been, each one that I'm aware of, I've been checking and checking with the list of students that have been registered this year and comparing it to the route sheets. So I do see now these students are on, and I actually helped sort those lists because, just to try to expedite it. And then the other piece that will be addressed starting next week, but again, is very important. Some of our bus stops have been changed. And in speaking to some parents and explaining where some of the new stops are, I share their concern around safety issues around some of those areas. And occasionally, when people aren't with a new director, they're not as familiar with Hastings. And then understanding the streets on which students would have to cross, you know, I agree that we need to kind of go back. And again, it may just be moving a stop, so it would be more of a looking at, again, and confirming our safety for, excuse me, our stops for our students. So as Bill had mentioned, I did it once the dust settles, and, you know, part of the issue is, at times we're calling, but, you know, we know the level of frustration people are finding, because in addition to things not being as they had hoped, not then being able to speak to someone, of course, just adds to anyone's frustration. So one of the pieces that we know has to be first and foremost in our post-operation analysis is how are we going to improve communication with parents? And especially just, you know, as we all like to have, is to actually be able to reach somebody, because that just really, that kind of lack of communication really is quite frustrating for folks. And then in terms of, again, this is all of us, all of the Quad Village partners. In speaking, I was actually speaking to an assistant superintendent of Orsley today, and I just said, you know, I know we're distance from it, we have to actively also be recruiting for an assistant director, because it's really just too much work for, you know, one person. And then if that person is out, you know, just falls apart very quickly. So that's just a priority that has to be addressed in the upcoming weeks. Again, we talked about working with the Quad Village partners to increase drivers among staff. And Melissa, who has previously worked in Orsley, discussed this, where Orsley has a number, they've incentivized and through, I guess, contract negotiations with their bargaining units, has had some of their current staff become drivers, like with the licensing requirements for that. Generally, in times such as these, where you can kind of pull people kind of into that. Now, that would have to be something that we would have to partner with, because we don't have the capacity to have buses here. And, but, you know, just having those drivers and working with, you know, increasing some of the bus purchases, which we, I don't know if anyone was on the board last year remembers, who did that full analysis of looking to purchase some land, or lease some land, to kind of increase our capacity, because we are very full of us in the Quad, and we're really relying on the district contracts. Orsley owns a few buses. That gives us a bit of flexibility. But part of our issue is we don't have the land, so it would require us to either lease or purchase land. I mean, I think some of the concern around it last year was it would have been an upfront increase for all the districts. And quite frankly, it was, you know, it would have, it's quite an undertaking. But, you know, after this year, you know, we all realize that there needs to be, we need to kind of build in a little bit more capacity, because really, we're just solely reliant on these application providers. So again, as I mentioned, I think, you know, we, as the days and weeks go by, you know, we're hoping that by next week, we're in a lot better place. And by tomorrow, we'll be in a better place than we were today. But it has been for our students in particular, and I'm sure the parents are frustrated, but like Dr. MacJersey and I, you know, we are concerned with students, the impact it has on their, their beginning of their school year and their learning. We understand how important that transportation is in the sense of a child's day, for like how they're going to perform that day at school. We understand the importance of, you know, not having children on a really unnecessarily long, unpleasant, you know, ride to school. So that's one presentation that we're going to get to. Now I'm just going to present some slides on the storm damage out that we incurred here in the district. I just put a couple slides together. I know some of the board members may have been able to kind of walk through the site and get a sense of the storm. And as Dr. MacJersey had mentioned, although it's fairly significant in the grand scheme of things, thankfully, our buildings weren't impacted when we've been able to operate. But we still did have some significant damage out of Reynolds Field. So first, I just kind of started with some pictures, just to kind of demonstrate some of the damage. So this is obviously the field as you're walking toward the back area of the track. And as you can see, starting pretty far back, that was just dirt that had washed down where the wall gave way and the drainage behind the field failed. So due to that, we had a lot of soil and debris on our track. And in the middle picture there, you can see just the sheer amount of rocks and stubs and tree limbs that came down. And it was pretty amazing, the distance that they traveled based upon the pressure of the water. And for a right picture, that is just part of the track that is completely covered with inches and inches of mud and dirt and debris. Here's another area which was a great cause of concern, because Reynolds isn't built-up property, and this retaining wall, although only part of it failed, it does, you know, from an engineering perspective, we were concerned about the safety of that area at that side of the track and the walking kind of trail around there. So that whole area had to move place. If you are there, you can see, you can see a lot of the drainage. Under the field was heavily damaged and actually just broken off and washed down. So in addition to that, once they get into fixing it, there's going to be some drainage repaired that's going to be on that side. So, but the other side of the retaining wall did hold up. Here is, but you can see it says sidewalk, that's now coming down from Reynolds Field going to the lower Reynolds. And as you can see, the entire sidewalk just hooked up. There's nothing holding it up underneath. The entire area below it washed out in its entirety. There's some, as I mentioned, in here, there's a lot of the drain pipes that, they were completely broken off and just washed away. And we had a significant amount of that dirt that went into our garage and is now covering the basketball courts and down the path. Also, lower Reynolds, although I don't have a picture of it, the entire sprinkler and irrigation system is done because of all the amount of debris that washed down there. This is actually something you don't see unless you go behind Reynolds Field. And this is the culvert that actually protects our fields. And there's a pipe there. It's a little bit hard to see. There's a pipe, and here's a huge plate pipe. And this is part of what really protects it, being, this is it, being this entire pipe is cracked right in half, and will need to be replaced in its entirety. And that, that takes the water and pulls it under, so it doesn't run over the field. And it was completely destroyed during this last storm. So we can't even get in there with our machinery to try to begin to clean it out, so we're going to need a contractor to come in and assist us, but that will have to be fully replaced. Or else like doing any work to the field, you know, would be pointless, because this is what protects it. Reynolds Field Tennis Courts, again, they're, they did start that process of cleaning them off, just so we can use them temporarily. They will need to be redone, just at least the top coat, as many or everyone in the community knows, this facility is fairly new. It's within the last five years, it was completely redone. These courts were built from scratch, so the top coat is significantly damaged. They cleaned them today, but the surface will need to be repaired, and that will, will, will open them most likely temporarily until they'll, they'll need to be closed off to be restored. Okay, so just to kind of give a quick timeline, we, the storm occurred the night of September 1st. We did come out, Joe and myself, to do some site evaluation on September 2nd early. We did claim, we filed a claim on that day, and the site began to be secured, because as you can see, there's multiple safety issues and concerns. There is some other damage to the site, I just kind of gave you. There are some of the walls up above the tennis court are completely washed away, and they'll have to be restored as well. Based upon, we were very concerned about the retaining wall behind the tennis court, because we, after the retaining wall went down, and again, that holds up a lot of, you know, property, and if, if that was compromised, so we called in our engineers and architects to put, to begin the site evaluation, to also help us understand, you know, if while things are being repaired, it would be safe or what part, you know, where is the field? Can we open that up at one point? And also to assist us in gathering information, we would need for our insurance company. We called in local field, track, and tennis contractors that we've worked with, just to begin to prepare quotes on the site, because this is a very time-consuming process, and in order for the, the insurance will want that information, and we know that, because unfortunately, we've had insurance claims here before. So in knowing that, we called out some people that have done work in the district prior to, to begin to assist us to, to get those together. So we left our insurance claim. We've had multiple visits from all of these folks, including today. I was back out on site, I think like 7:15, with Joe with an insurance adjuster again. We've also met with FEMA. Representatives have come out to the site as well. So I'll, I'll give you the update, there we are. So these are some of our next steps. We've begun the cleanup at the tennis courts. The contractor will be on site tomorrow and be resurrecting high fences to, so that we're able to kind of gain some use of Reynolds Field while, you know, these repairs will not begin for, for quite a bit because of the insurance process. And they will also assist us in removing the, the heavy debris, which requires certain types of machinery to get out of the property. There is going to be a need for, I think, some further evaluation by the insurance company, being as I mentioned, some of the items are, you know, not, they didn't get fully under the area to see what the drainage issue is, that that'll require some cameras to kind of go in and see the extent of the drain damage. We're hoping or we're anticipating, we're, we're pretty optimistic, we'll be able to reopen Reynolds Field for this Saturday, September 18th. And that's why bringing, assisting, bringing in the outside group, which of course will be covered by insurance, the cleanup, we got confirmation today from the insurance adjuster, that we can begin that and use an outside contractor to, to help us in that process to reopen that field. In the meantime, just, you know, just to be clear, the football team and other teams have been sharing the Berka State. I mean, the good thing about having the extra fields there is we've been able to, to continue practice. The only team that's really been displaced during this time has been our tennis team, and we did get insurance to allow them to, to practice at Doc Sherry, with, they allowed us to bring our kids over there to the spring horse school, so we were able to do that. But again, we, we are hoping to, like Joe said, he would like by end of day tomorrow, but I think by Wednesday to reopen the tennis courts. We have confirmation that, that retaining wall behind it, which was the main concern there, it wasn't so much the debris. Of course, we did need these other people to come out and evaluate it and see the condition and, and the drain system at the tennis courts significantly, as well as the tracks, drain system is significantly damaged. But we believe we'll have that back open for, for use for our, our kids for the remainder of this particular season. We should receive insurance coverage notification by October 1st, meaning they'll let us know what they're going to be willing to pay. We know what our insurance limit is. We're lucky we do have flood coverage, not everybody has it. He actually mentioned today that many schools don't have the policy on it, because it's not, you know, something we're typically accustomed to having, those type of damages. And then again, the contract, with the contractor will begin repairs. The thing with this is as we get more into the winter season, depending on when we can start that work, if we need to resurface the track, we would probably need to the spring to do that, because in terms of the way the, the weather has to be at a certain temperature in terms of underlying that material, similar to the tennis courts, but again, this is not a complete reconstruct, but it would be a resurface. And then, you know, based upon what we were told by FEMA, that once we get an, an understanding of what the insurance will cover, we would start to submit paperwork on anything that was not covered by insurance, we would start to meet with FEMA for, 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 for this one. Okay, that's that on this one. Okay. And I'm just going to give a very, very brief update on the COVID, continuing on what Bill started to speak about. As you're, as you know, we are required, New York State came out with a mandate that, that if staff and contractors, anybody working on school grounds is not fully vaccinated, they would have to submit a weekly test to the district. So we have fantastic school nurses and great partners in our medical directors, and we started to talk about, you know, what that would look like. So first, our first step in that process was during last week, during the break, we started to collect and compile like who, who in fact was vaccinated, so have an understanding of having the folks. And as Bill said, we used, we used the state database and things like that, because that was a quicker way to find out the information and relying on everyone coming with it. By doing that, we, as, as Dr. Mac Percy had mentioned, we always remember high percentages of staff. We have found that sometimes people have had them test, test, excuse me, vaccinations done occasionally, like New York City and different places, they're not always in the state database, so we believe our numbers a lot, probably will end up about 90% or so of our staff and contractors, and that includes our cafeteria folks, our security people, the contractors that are working in construction, they're also required to submit to this. So we wanted to make sure that anybody that we work with is, you know, identified in there and we've gotten all their information. And then what we kind of come down to is we have a sense of about 45, say around 50 folks will have to be, submit to weekly testing. In, in speaking with the nurses, they feel the best way to control that and make sure it's happening with fidelity is, is to do the testing here, because if we could rely on people putting tests in, depending, I've known with unions, and occasionally it may require us to either give leave time, so it may be a much easier, efficient way to, to perform the testing here. And we feel comfortable, they feel that'll actually be the best way to ensure that it's done and that we have all the information we need. What we're, we're thinking of doing is just scheduling people, like breaking it over the course of the week, so nine to 10 people a day would be scheduled, and this way, you know, not everyone on Monday, so that the volume of, of the, the nurse's office won't be pressed too much. They'll be, as I mentioned, they'll be assigned days and times, and now that we have a good sense of that, we have ordered the tests, provide a next test, rapid test, and if we get some this week, we'll begin the testing process next week. If not, it'll begin a week after. In addition to, we had already started to look, or we were required to do so, into doing a, well, no, we weren't required at the time, we looked into like the surveillance testing. And that was a program that was being offered through Westchester County. They were, they, they have some funding, and they provide district's partners to help us do that testing in district. So we were underway with that process, and when this, the new mandates had come out, we wanted to wait further to see whether, you know, there was going to be, if this was still going to be our partner. It is still, and where we are in this process, is we do have a partner, we're already, there's a resolution this evening for the board to approve, just pretty much finalize it, that we will be performing the surveillance test in partnership with Westchester County. And our, our partner, who was assigned to us by the kind of quadrant, and they are going to provide the testing materials and representative to our district as well as others. They dictate the dates, they'll let us know the days available, they come once a week, and they perform a surveillance-based test. And it, it's more like pool testing, so it's not, it won't, it's not as, they take a certain amount of samples, and based on those samples, they test, they don't test all of them, they tend to percentage of them. But, so, okay, so again, it's gateway baseline testing, it's going to continue as planned. We need parents or students to consent on that, that they want to opt into this program. We all, we will only receive a specific number of tests, it's not like an unending number of tests, so even if we have more people opt in, we're going to be limited to how many tests. I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem based upon the number I believe we'll be able to acquire, so I, I think we'll be fine there. We will be starting a process of offering unvaccinated students weekly testing, parental consent required. On the information, which again, we've gotten in conjunction with Westchester County, provided us a template of information we need to send out to parents, and we're finalizing that with them now, so we hope to get that out either, I hope it goes out late this week or very early next week. And again, you'll see the test of random sampling of consenting unvaccinated. But now they've kind of extended to allow vaccinated folks to opt into that if they, if they want to. But it isn't going to be, it'll be part of a pool test, so I'm not sure whether vaccinated people will want to, but if we have enough tests, we would offer it to them as well. And again, districts are responsible for tracking, the tracking of this information. So, but that was also part of the requirement to provide a surveillance test. Okay, I'm almost done, and you don't have to hear me anymore tonight. Very, very quick happy update, we haven't done these in a bit. This is really just about our, these are the happy, but everything else is not really up to this point. So again, just to, to bring you up to speed for the public and for the board on the Hillside Edition project, as you may recall, all the structural steel now has been installed on the project. The roof is near completion, which is a big milestone. It started on site, thankfully, we had no issue getting roofing materials, although, you know, there was, there was some concern early on, just, but we've been very fortunate. We haven't had any issues with getting materials on site. The foam insulation exterior walls are, are continuing to be installed. The building should be closed up within the month. The parvila, which is the decorative of the exterior of the building, and the glass cow wall for the front of the building, which are two large kind of fabricated pieces, are in the port, in the final states of approval, they're being fabricated and they'll be installed in late October. That's actually like, that's another big milestone for us in terms of the, the project, it's a specialty piece. The interior work, it's already starting, but it'll really get fully underway in October, all of the different utilities and all the finishes won't really be able to take place during that time. Again, just to remind everyone, we are still on our schedule, substantial completion the end of February, right there, 2021, 2022, of course, I have more data here, excuse me for that, final completion March 2022. The rooms in the existing building that are part of the renovation project, they'll, they will be available to us a bit earlier. We, right now, we have some of our special teacher sharing space and pushing out, and they'll be able to get into those rooms a bit earlier before the full additions is open, because that's part of the existing building, it doesn't need a CO to open. And then the remainder of the building will be open March 2022. Cafeteria operations, meaning the, the full-scale operation will begin until September 2022, but we do think we might be able to have a light, some type of options, just to kind of have a, maybe a couple of days, at least, we'll still have some food brought out there, just to kind of have a light opening. And we do anticipate that all of our end-of-year ceremonies will occur in, in this space. So again, these are just some photographs from the last time. I know the board isn't at this site until August, you can see, just kind of, it's really getting more closed up than what you even seen. And here, there, this is in, in the space where our interior lifts are working on, as you can see, all the ductwork and all those things that have been put in place since the last time we toured. Just some, just exterior shots of the building. This is the back, the backside of the building, and you can just kind of see that, such a beautiful view, it will help for those classrooms. And then here is looking up, kind of where the, that area, of course, will be restored to, to grass, and then looking up into the, the building, and that's that angle. And then just a couple more different shots of the framing, and again, that's the, the front wall, which will have that, that glass cow wall. Another, you know, this, the construction was a particularly not complex, somewhat complex construction of, of the ceiling there. Okay, so our dim music suite, again, we, we did tour that site when it was being abated, not abated, reconfigured, and, and that is, the abatement and the reconfiguration has both occurred. The new lighting, which was a big part of the renovation of space, bringing all new lighting into that, into that performance space, has been done, as well as an upgrade to the service. The new acoustical ceiling, which again, was a big part of the issues around that room, the sound quality in that room, is actually began last week and it is continuing. If anyone was dropping their kids off this morning, there was a big truck outside, which wasn't supposed to be there at that time, but delivering more materials, and that should be completed by the end of September. New flooring in this space, October. Storage and, and everything else will be completed by, by October. With, again, we're, we're right on target to have that space completely open for our students and staff November 1st. Completely appreciate your patience and work there. Middle School Auditorium, this, this evening, the awards, the recommendation for awards for the three low, low bidders on the project, and they've all been fully, we met with them when I started, extensive interviews, we've done all the background information, checks on all of them, we're very happy. We had a, a lot of people bid on it, and we had a, a lot of very low-respected contractors and, and the three that are winning, we're very happy with. So we'll be making those awards this evening, they'll begin work right away, ordering materials and getting on site, and starting to set up for, for that work to begin. And again, that is, with any luck, also going to be completed by March 1st, 2022, and again, looking to reopen that space the week of March 7th for Stanford students. So we were very happy with the outcome of those bids. And that is it for me for this evening.
Thank you, Marie. I hope you've had time to eat and go to sleep. That's a tremendous amount of research that you've been doing and information that you've collected for us. I, I do remember being here once when a woman who had gone to school here 22 years ago, I think it was, said that this wasn't, the auditorium wasn't functional when she was here. So this is so long in coming, very exciting. Thank you to Ms. Mansky for your report about science especially. I feel like every year we hear about accomplishments from that class of Ms. Chandrop's, and that's very exciting. I, I can barely even understand the title of the work that the student did, that's how advanced it sounds, but that's fun for us to hear and terrific for our district, so thank you. In terms of the, the busing, that sounds like an incredibly frustrating situation. I hope that that company is able to hire some, some strong people.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's our company, and I'm not excusing, because, you know, of course, there's things that maybe could have been done differently, but our company actually, the company we, we contract with actually did provide signing bonuses to bring people on, which, I mean, I'm not sure what everybody else was doing, but I think in terms of speaking to some of my counterparts in other districts, that was not something they were at that point. They do believe, again, this is what I've, seems to be what most people are thinking, that with the expiration of the federal unemployment benefits, that they are starting to see people coming back coming back to work. You know, part of it though, is depending if they need to requalify or some of those other kind of things, that if they haven't been working in a year and a half, I don't know, you know, there may be something to kind of onboard them again. But I, but we are seeing, you know, as the days go on, you know, they're, they're trying everything they can to kind of recruit drivers. I mean, they had drivers that just didn't end up coming back or said, you know, we'll, we'll be back in a month or so, so. And part of it, you know, is that a lot of people, I guess, or, I mean, evidently in the same situation, of course, we're focusing on our situation, we can't focus everybody else's, but it is, it is, it's been something that when I, I know all of my colleagues in the region, for the most part, unless I guess they have their, a very large program themselves, have been struggling with. Especially the area in which we, we're in, meaning Lower Westchester, Yonkers has a huge out of district transportation program, they, they contract out all their, for the most part, yeah, I don't even think they have any in districts. So I think part of the challenge also is like the, there's not that many providers down here, we're all kind of going for the same buses, and, you know, we, we, we're trying to kind of just work collaboratively. I mean, at this point, it's, it's frustrating, and it is, and I think what it really, we really do need to kind of go back and just have a, it's almost unprecedented, but I think just going forward, you know, we, we can't be so reliant, you know, solely on the provider. I think that is just a lesson, you know, the biggest lesson, I would say, learn from this. Everything else, I don't think, I think much of it was out of their control, but I think we need to have, if we had more flexibility or had some more buses ourselves, even if there were a small number of them, it would have definitely benefited us this week, you know, may not, we would still run into some of the issues, but it would not have been what we're, you know, just having children not being transported at all is, I've never experienced that in all the years I've worked here. I mean, they, it's not great routes, but that one, and, and some parents, some of the parents don't, of those children, some of them don't have transportation, they're relying on like family members, so I mean, it's that, and it's significant, you know, so.
Allison.
Sorry, can I just ask a, a side direct question? So can you, probably you had mentioned it, but what is the immediate next step to support? And I, I know this is totally chaotic, but what is the immediate next step just to solve the problem? Probably you mentioned it, but I have no.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, well, the immediate, so the, the children without, without current transportation at all, if, being it doesn't seem like we're going to have a driver for tomorrow, they're going to have to be routed on existing routes. That may mean that we, you know, speak to the schools and say, you know, if the child's there 15 minutes late, can you give us a cushion? Or, you know, work with, because it will impact other children, because that means they're added to existing bus routes that they weren't added to initially, because they're not, they're already, you know, fairly long. And one of the items I had mentioned to them, we have some of our children who attend to Hillside coming in on small buses, and I said, you know, possibly if that's a bus you need to use, I can either work with the principal there and have some aides or assistants maybe come in 15 minutes early, just to, you know, gain some flexibility there. Because that's really the only place where some schools will not take children early, as, as, you know, like they, they have a very strict start time. Being it's our, you know, that was one of the places I've asked them to look, to look at the buses that are bringing in our children, can be those smaller buses to Hillside, then at least, if, if it's feasible, I can call the parents and say, you know, can your child be dropped off 15 or 20 minutes early, we'll have staffing there, and then, you know, we're going to put those buses back out. And then probably those children will still be a little later than they would, because some of the schools are quite far. But that, that's the, what they're being, that would be something that I would say would be the least impactful, because I don't, you know, we're going to be creating other issues to solve one. And then in terms of the, the second, which I had spoken about, which was the Eagle Hill, which that one really was in my mind an easier fix, because they just really had to find a place to put these other two students, and, but I think because they were so underwater, it was, they kept saying, yeah, we're going to do it, and then it just, you know, something else would happen, and they just didn't do it. But this evening, I was on with actually my counterpart in Arslay, and she was able to get them into a room, and then we did find a bus by calling another colleague in another district that also goes to that school, so, meaning our private school. So I was told that that would be now routed, and that that would, that situation would be, you know, fixed by the week's end. That, that's the one thing with bus companies, and I don't want to be critical, because it's a really difficult job, and, and, you know, bus drivers, pretty amazing, because it's a very hard, you know, job that they do every day, but even when you put a, a change in the route, Melissa, you may remember this, it takes them like a few days to, they, they actually want them to drive, rewrite, like drive the route prior to them put it in, like, you're like, well, what's for GPS, can't they just do it tomorrow? But they, they don't. It usually, once the change is made, it does take them two or three days. I guess that's standard, and I don't do it, so I try just to, you know, respect what they tell me. But I have been told that those two issues, the first one, getting kids on transportation, that may not be their final bus, but that will happen this week. And then the Eagle Hill, I was told that that'll be, you know, addressed, and then starting tonight, because they did find, it's like, it doesn't matter the bus number, but another bus that was supporting that school. And actually, interestingly, the kids were coming home on that bus in the afternoon, so I don't know why that wasn't the route to begin with. But again, I think part of it was like some new folks in there, and, and maybe these are types of issues that if they happened, it would have been immediately fixed, but because of, you know, it just got lost in all the other issues that they started to have, so.
Thank you. I have two more questions, but can I wait, it's not related to the bus, so should I?
Oh, sure. I have a bus question, can I ask it now, or should I wait?
No, you can.
I'm sure you thought of everything, Maureen, and the bus company has too, but it seems like what's hard is that you have to get trained in driving the buses, have, you have to get trained, you have to get trained in driving the buses, and that's what's hard, you know, for them to have the training. Have we thought about having like minivans, you know, for places where you just have like three kids going, you know, it might just be, you don't have to be trained to be on a minivan.
You know, you do, you still do. You still do.
To drive students.
Yeah.
But isn't it just, but isn't it?
I can't even have a parent drive, there's.
Right, they need insurance, but it's not the same sort of like, when you drive a bus, you have to like practice, you have to like practice driving the bus, and you have to pass the driver's test.
Yeah, they still, they still need to like, it is still a separate, like I couldn't go in a minivan and drive the bus.
It is a separate.
Yeah, it is a special, yeah.
Okay, I thought it might be a little less complicated.
Oh, sorry, but that being said, I think that was kind of my point, we did, and again, not, because again, had we had any understanding what was going to occur this year, last year, just, it was really initially sparked because, you know, cost of busing is very expensive, but you know, in fairness to the companies, the, the cost of the buses themselves, and the insurance, and all, all the expenses, and again, the yards and everything, you know, we're, just to give you a sense, it's like for one small bus, it's about $85,000 a year without a monitor, is the cost, which again, is actually a very good contract compare, comparatively in Westchester County. So, you know, some people were, came up, and we did like an analysis of, of just looking at different things, but also partially because sometimes we felt we could benefit from having a few, just to kind of enhance what we're doing, and just help us with some of these, some routes and things such as that. I mean, part of it was when we, when we did this, Arslay's the only place that has a little bit of room to kind of store a few more buses, you're required to even have like a, like a garage, like it, under state law, there's like different requirements, even to have any type of vehicle on your property.
Well, I have a question, not to interrupt Maureen, but, but in order to, I mean, I just caution us thinking about like, do we even want to get into the busing business? Because it sounds like there's not a lack of buses, there's a lack of bus drivers. And that's not something that we can control, even if we own buses. So that's a, it's a huge expense and very complicated.
No, but we don't, we just want to do like, not, we don't want to get to your point, because what we found is it would be expensive, although we would gain more control, we'd be looking at more of a, having a few more buses, just to offer flexibility, because there are times in which I think it could be cost, it would be better service, and there could be maybe cost neutral, I don't even want to say cost beneficial, that, that I think there is an opportunity there to like not, I, I agree with you doing, we don't have the capacity or the, it would, it would create other issues, so I think, but I do think there's, I think there's a need for us to have some more available to us.
Do they have buses at all? I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about driving buses, bus to schools, but like, let's say the athletes, do they have buses to go to?
Yeah, because those, those have, I'm sorry, on our in district buses to the, sorry, the out of district.
Yeah, I, I, I think the immediate right now is you've got your top business official making sure children have buses. And, and that's how bad this is, because we've got a triage at that level. But if you read a comment I sent to you all as a board, I'm very unhappy about this, and I should be very unhappy, it's not the first time I've seen this. So I think the basic model here is the right model, but you had two key staff leave, so you had no staff at the collaborative to do this. Then you have a, many of us in this region, I've been in this region 10 years, the last three years been deeply worried, Fairfield County, same thing, about bus driver shortage. We dodged it up until now, so that's a very severe issue. So you have your two people back at home who do all the routing, all the rest, not there. So that safety issue is a real one, so we got to get out of this. But then I think we owe to you as a board to work with the collaborative and say, we can't let this happen again. We got to figure out what went on, and, and so you as a board's at the deadline, but we need to work several months. Once we get, you know, the, all the students are in district and are out of district students, get them on routes that are working, that's what we got to focus on now. And Maureen and I have been talking seven days a week about this, and, and that's the kind of emphasis we have. And I've written to, you know, Ryan at Arslay to say, we've, you know, once we get through this, that's, you know, fellow super, we've got to figure this out, because it's four or five of us in districts in this. So then, you know, come back to you as a board, come back to the community, say, here are the fixes we have, some of which, you know, even with the two gone, we should have had something, but it, you know. So I think right now, you as a board need to hear that we're working on this, we're trying to solve it for each of the students affected, then we have to come back, because I think to go to your question, Maureen, you, this I think is a basic, a good model, because it's very expensive to run your own buses, you don't want to do that. Then if you outsource, you can outsource on a single contractor's for Hastings, that's very expensive. So I think the idea of pooling this as a shared service, five, right, districts, is the right way to go. But then is how's it staffed, how's it managed, what's the communication? I mean, we have kindergarten children waiting for their bus without a bus. Mr. Happy here was pretty upset when he heard that.
Yeah, he was, he was.
You know, so we, we got to fix it.
I want to, I want to say that I know that, like now being on the board, I know you work, you guys work really hard, and I see, I see everything that is happening behind the scene. But I also know that if the community is not receiving the communication, then it doesn't look like something is really happening. So I think the first step is our website. I'm, I'm sorry to bring that up, because the website, in this day and age, the website is the to-go place that allows for quick communication. Those emails are amazing, but if the, the website needs to be done, I mean, like, I, I am, I work in the university, I can see a colleague here who, working in education, so to speak, you know, there is, a parking lot is not going to be available, you see it, you know, there's that pop-up thing, you send these e-mails, it gets lost, and the information is rich. But there are certain things that just, you know, if you go to the website, you click login, there's only one login. I have to log into the board email, I have to go through my personal email and add an account. It shouldn't be, I should be able to click login and see, so I think we need to do something about the website. I mean, sorry, I just threw it in there like that.
But just to add, you know, in that case, it's, you know, if, if the real-time information, if this information is only valuable in real time, it needs to be provided in real time, that's basically.
Correct, correct, and there is, exactly, you know, you will see in recent time, because of the remote that we had in the universities, it's like you, the banner, there's a place, a corner with a red banner, you know you have to pay attention to that, because something has happened, right? So you just look at it, and it's just a quick information, it's not clutter, but it's a quick information that is immediate, so, just like the kids, right?
Yeah, well, if I may, I mean, I, again, I, I've lived this, so you might say, thanks, Bill, you brought this. I did not, but I've lived this. So the answer you want there is to be staffed up, so which, when Jane or Johnny don't have their bus, the parent calls the bus transportation, says, my bus is not here, or has an app that does it. So these things between now, we got to get fixed, we're not getting them fixed tomorrow, because I agree with you on the website, but to keep it on the transportation topic, it's got to be real time and fast, so the families, be they in district or out of district, if they don't have a bus, they can get to someone, someone can respond, and, and get that, that fixed. So communication is a key, key part of this. But here, it's very focused, very retail, very specific, and, and that's part of what we have to look at.
I had to, this is.
No, I'd like to jump in if I could, thank you. Allison, thank you guys. I'd like to keep our focus on a couple things, you know, and for our community and for our board, there is crisis management, short-term stuff, and I think we're all trying to throw out our thank yous, we hear it, we see it, we know it by the times of the emails. When things need short-term adjustments, that's what our administration does, and Maureen, thank you, and Bill, thank you. Some of those line items were nice to hear, especially when I see the Eagle Hill, you know, really getting taken care of, and I'm pretty sure that, no, Eagle Hill getting, apologies, what I saw was Eagle Hill looked like a couple days away, they're trying to put those kids on a bus, it even said, I thought, and I'm probably wrong, I thought it said even maybe tonight, they were trying to reroute that. We're also lucky that Winward hadn't started yet, but I wanted to pull back a little bit from the, the short term. The short term is for our parents to share with the board, and for our administrators to do their work. But for a long-term issue, I'd like to put this out there for other board members, I've expressed concerns about busing in general, and this might be an opportunity for us, we don't handle the small stuff, so thank you, thank you, and we don't know what's about to come, so thank you for bringing it. But the way I see it, a long-term issue, we have three types of busing. We have busing that we provide to Hillside, that's our in-district busing. Maureen, you said 574 students in district? That sounded like maybe the population of Hillside.
But that was on the list that we got today from Arslay.
Gotcha.
It was, it was between Farragut and here.
We have some students that get busing to Farragut if they live a mile and a half away.
Yes.
Okay, and it's 574 that use our buses?
That's, well, that's what they had currently in the routing system is out of.
In the routing system, thank you. So I'd like us to just, in long-term, think about, we have.
Not everybody uses it though, to your point.
No, not, especially not this year, when we have a lot of flexibility and an urge by a lot of families not to use busing. But I would like to direct some of our energies, as Bill said, maybe three months down the road after the administration does their work. There's in-school busing, there's out-of-district busing, and I've spoken at the budget meetings of trying to split that and think about it. I think our community has a responsibility for out-of-district busing for our special education schools and our high learning difference students, where we've known why they're leaving the district. I think there's an opportunity for us to reevaluate what we're doing for our private school students. And I don't think a lot of our community knows this, but we send buses to 37 schools. That's not 37 schools for high learning difference students. And I think this is an opportunity for us to reevaluate what we want to provide. Maureen, I'm not up to date on it, because we had a lot going on in spring, and I don't want to dig into the details now, but we have a obligation based on states to provide some amount of busing to these students, and I believe we're going beyond that, and especially with busing shortages. New York City just provides an option, here's your money for the subway or a subway pass for buses. We have Westchester buses, we have other options, so we can pull away from some of this, 37 schools. We don't provide busing for our middle school students and our high school students. So this has been something that I'd like our board to consider picking up later. I find a lot of it objectionable, the amount of effort that we spend to send door-to-door buses for our high school students who are going to private schools, and it takes away from what we can be looking at. I'm pulling out, I think we have an obligation for our Southern BOSsies, I think we have obligations for our Winward students, our Eagle Hill students, and other learning difference students, obviously, we have some specialty schools for a lot of these things. I want us to pull away on the focus from what Maureen and Bill are working on and what Bill's disappointed about. That's what they're going to crush, they are going to solve it, some of those things look like it's starting to come through. I think busing is something that we should look at later on, two, three, four months from now, as not just a budget-saving opportunity, but also what are our obligations? There are not 37 schools that I want to be. There are not 37 schools that I want to be finding bus drivers for, and I know we work with the other schools. Thank you for letting me take up that much time.
Tell me, can I ask a clarifying question? So these 37 schools are not part of the IEP students and all those specialized, just?
Well, some are, some are.
Thank you. Of the 75 students, we haven't had a breakdown, because we've had other priorities, and I just want to push this to the back. We can't get a breakdown tonight, I just want to put it out there. They're not, of our 75 students, they're not all IEP students. There is some mandates, but just in general, I'd love, love for us to just, you know, we love hearing about your efforts. It sounds miserably difficult this month, and Bill, you said you saw it coming in other districts. And I know it wasn't an easy fix or anything, Maureen, but in general, as we pull back, there's three parts of busing. Demarius, and one of them concerns me. You're concerned about our failures getting Hillside students to Hillside. You're concerned about getting our, you know, all of our students to our special needs schools. I think it's not a topic for now, you know, crisis management, that's your job, it's not our jobs. But four months down the road, maybe, Demarius, we can look into some of these issues and, and learn more about it. Because I'm, I'll admit, I can't answer your question.
Thank you.
If it's okay, can we just table the rest of our suggestions with that and sort of take that longer approach? And we have students here, I'd like to get home, and we're gonna turn to them in our agenda. We're on number four for the student report. Welcome to our student liaisons again, Sabine and Gus, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. The seniors had a very exciting first day of school. Many came to school early to decorate the lobby and play music and show off their school spirit before classes even began. And we also wore our senior shirts on the first day, and the tie-dye that many students used to decorate their shirts looked great. It was a very vibrant-looking crowd. Varsity girls and boys soccer both won their first games on Friday. The girls' team won six to two against Haldane, and the boys' team won two to zero against Rhineck. The girls' tennis team also beat Dobbs Ferry three to two on Friday. The peer leadership fall senior retreat began this afternoon, and the first student union meeting of the year will be held on Wednesday morning. We will be discussing goals for the year, a club fair from Monday the 20th, and fundraising ideas.
Yeah, field hockey also beat Rhineck one to zero on Friday, and junior player Sarah Weinstein was just nominated for Lowheads Field Hockey Player of the Week Award, which is a pretty big deal, it's pretty awesome. Cross-country came out really strong in our first meet, which was up at Somers, the girls came in third. Boys didn't do as well, but we still did pretty good. And that was without having the track to practice on. We've been lucky to have the whole Burgess State Complex to run around. Early morning rehearsals for high school band and orchestra began this week, and the band, Sabine, had our first rehearsal this morning. Volunteers from Project Share went to houses around the community to help move stuff around and repair after the flooding from Hurricane Ida. So that was a really great thing high school students did to help out the community. Modified sports started today, which is awesome. Our seventh and eighth graders are, you know, getting back in all their different games. And then juniors are gearing up for JF, which is coming pretty soon in October, they're starting to pick out themes and get all ready for that. Just on a sort of general, you know, what people are thinking about. I think a lot of these days off have really thrown people's sense of like, what day it is off? I've just heard all over the place, you know, I, I don't even know what day it is, let alone what letter day it is. So I think it's gonna be really nice, you know, after you've wore up your holidays, next week, you know, next week and the coming months, to sort of settle into more of a routine, but things can be going pretty well, at least in the high school.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. About the sports and the spirit being up, and I agree, parents also don't know which day it is and which letter day and the rest of it. So it'll be good to get that routine.
Can I ask Gus some questions? This public share, I'm not familiar with that, what is that, exactly?
It's a, it's a, it's a nonprofit that runs right out of the high school, I'm on the board. It's, we're started by Jeannie Newman, who's, was an art teacher, maybe 30 years ago, and worked here for 30 years. So we do midnight runs every month, and then, you know, we're the ones that host the big Thanksgiving dinner for you, for the owners and the general.
That's excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Our first public comment period is open for items, normally they're related to items specifically on the agenda piece, not made in an update, but we decided that since we had a large conversation about busing, and some of you are here to talk about that part, that that would be okay to comment on in this first period, so you can get home. Comments are limited to three minutes in duration. Please state if you're a resident of Hastings and wait, well, no, I don't mean to say that, because you're here in person, okay. So thank you. Do we have somebody who would like to make the first comment?
I have Marcy Panigay first.
Oh, Panigay, sorry.
You come up here to the lectern.
Hi, I'm Marcy Panigay. I have a son, Eddie Panigay, Edward Panigay. He is in the Eagle Hill School District, parent placement. Thank you for addressing our concerns already about the busing issues, but I wrote this letter prior to knowing that. So I'm glad it's already getting worked out, but I'll just state my letter. I would like to comment on the problems we are having with bus Q27 that is going to and from Eagle Hill in Greenwich. We, the parents, wrote the attached letter, which Tom Kenny will probably go next and read the letter. We wrote the letter prior to school starting over a week and a half ago, and the district hasn't responded to it yet. But we were assured that this would be resolved, which it hasn't been, and we were not given any updates. We have confirmation that our bus to and from Eagle Hill is picking and dropping off at Holy Child and Rye. In addition to Eagle Hill, the kids on the bus are on the bus for an extra 45 minutes in the AM. And they're also waiting 45-plus minutes after school for the bus to pick them up and arriving home around 5:30, 5:45, or usually they get home around 4:30 or 4:45. So they're missing their after-school activities. My son particularly has been very anxious and upset, because he does football through Dobbs Ferry School District, because he can't do modified, I mean, he's missed all of his practices. Therefore, he was not able to play his game this weekend, and it's created complete havoc in my house. Now he doesn't want to go to school there anymore, so it's very problematic. So it's creating a lot of anxiety and stress for our children, therefore they can't learn properly. I just get emotional all the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyway, that's enough.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Tom Kenny, I live at 21 Overlook Road. I want to specifically thank Maureen. Maureen has, I know, worked very hard on this, and she has made an effort to reach out to me and keep me updated about some of the progress. So I'm, I'm personally grateful for that. But beyond that, there's, there's still a really significant issue that I just want to add a personal note to. So I'm just gonna sort of give a modified version of an email that I sent to the Ardsley Busing Company, to the superintendent, to Doug Suntheim, to Laura Sullivan. And again, I'll just note that the, really the only response I've had is from Maureen. So I'm speaking on behalf of the approximately 11 or 12 families who have students at Eagle Hill. And we've been collectively distressed by the really severe degradation in the busing that we've experienced this year compared to past years. So, you know, the bus pickup times have been significantly altered from previous years. So my daughter Paige has had her pickup moved from 7:10 a.m. last year to 6:39 a.m. Other children's pickup times vary slightly, but are equally early. At least one student, I think, has a pickup time of 6:19 a.m. So the frustration in our sizable group of parents is palpable. You know, our children attend Eagle Hill because they have special needs. All of them have ADHD and/or other learning disabilities that make regular sleep schedules essential, and an almost two-hour bus ride, a serious impediment to their arriving at school in a frame of mind prepared for learning. Children like my daughter, who have executive functioning issues, require more time than other students to complete basic tasks and routines, such as getting dressed and eating. The currently scheduled start times require my daughter and other students to get up as early as 5:30 in the morning. I think we all know, as educators, I'm an educator myself, that all the current research shows the benefits of later start times for middle and high school-age students, which is even more true for special education students. Many of us found even last year's much later pickup times challenging. A 6:30 a.m. pickup time amounts to a de facto denial of transportation for our children. Additionally, the unnecessarily extended travel times in the afternoon add considerably to an already very long school day for our children. So while I do appreciate and understand that, that Maureen and others are working very hard on this issue, we feel very strongly that the bus schedule has to be addressed in the very short term, and that on behalf of the group, I'm respectfully requesting that you revise the bus schedules for our group, and at a minimum reinstate the pickup times from last year. So I, I do thank you for working on this issue, but I, I do really want to add, you know, it's, these, in the abstract, these can sound like maybe even petty concerns, but I assure you, when you're the parent of a special needs child, and you're trying to get your kid on the bus at 6:30 in the morning on a daily basis, that is, that is a monumental undertaking. So we, we are in desperate need of your help, and we, we will be paying very close attention going forward to how quickly this issue gets attended to and resolved. But I do thank you, and I do understand that you're working on it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it, does it have to do with something that's on the agenda tonight?
Oh, okay.
So for the second period, you'll be.
Would you like to go home early? Do it now?
Okay. Thank you to those who spoke. We'll move to business items, the first six on the agenda. Do we have any questions or comments that board trustees would like to make in reference to business items number one through 14?
Are we voting on that?
We will be voting, yes.
So are we gonna go through them then, or do we have hours?
It's understood that we would have looked at them ahead of time, and then if you have questions, further questions, that you can voice those questions.
Well, I was interested in the, the program that we want to fund for the Bard Institute of Writing and Thinking. Because I'm familiar with the program, and I was, I was very excited about it. Initially, I thought it was something, gonna be something that they have a student arm of that, where teachers learn how to run aspects of the, that, of the IWT system in schools. And, but if I'm correct, the things that are available in October, November, those are more like professional development.
That's correct, yes. So we have had a partnership with Bard in the same way, not a formalized partnership, but our teachers have participated in workshops through Bard in the past. And Josh Blum actually came to me, and he said that there was a lot of interest within the department again this year. And could I please consider sending some folks? And so we looked at it together. Lou Ada Pietro was also very supportive of that. And so that's of interest by the teachers specifically and of our request.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think Bard does a fantastic job. I, you know, I think that's, you know. The only thing I would sort of like to see as a parent is, know that Bard, through the IWT program, offers professional teachers that's directed towards teaching their system in schools. That comes up in spring, so I don't know if you guys are considering that at all, I've talked about it. But the Bard IWT program, it grows out of work from a, he's Professor at UMass, Peter Elbow, if I'm not mistaken. And it's a writing technique that turns around, you know, this is sort of a model of, we all kind of learned when we were little, sort of take by numbers, which is we make an outline, and then we work off the outline, just sort of fill in and flesh out. And his whole, you know, approach turns it on its head, where you start by generating content. You start by thinking and exploring your own thoughts and trying to add on, and you sort of mound up stuff. And then you work backwards from what you have in front of you. And, you know, I, I've always liked that process, it's kind of the stuff I do at home with my own kids, because it's sort of closer to, closer to the process of creativity, I think. And also, it kind of uses a lot of the skills of oratory, which is also this approach, like, you know, you're speaking as you're writing, you're writing as you're speaking. And I think it's incredibly valuable, so I was excited to see it. But if there's any chance that that might come up as a topic about perhaps professional development in spring, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear about it, and I think the board would be, I can't really explain the details, but I think the board would find it very interesting.
I will certainly circle back. I know that there's been a lot of interest, and actually, because the offerings don't always come up in time in terms of, you know, budget season, we do have money that's allocated to make sure that teacher professional learning and things that they're passionate and interested in are built into that as well. And so we will definitely look into that together. And I know there's a lot of excitement under the program, so that's great, thank you.
Melissa, I don't have, I mean, I know it's not our job to be in the details of the works of curriculum, but can you, in your own, can you let us, let me know why this, what, what, what was your thought behind this whole? As per what, yeah, you know what I'm asking about.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in terms of the fact that this was something that the teachers were seeking out, and it came from them. You know, my thought process is around making sure that when we're thinking about professional learning, that it really connects with not only our beliefs and our values, but I know that in this particular instance, one of the draws for the workshops at Bard is that it was really aligned with, not only around meaning-making, collaborative strategies and working with students, but there were, you know, in terms of the actual lineup, I thought that it was very interesting in terms of what the focus was. So there are the first one, when I, you know, I asked for a little more information, then I started to my own digging. The first one was really talking about raising questions about race and gender and language, you know, that's being used. And I thought that that was really interesting, especially in light of the cultural response of framework. And then thinking about gender, sexuality, thinking about excerpts from different documentaries, or thinking about digital texts, and also thinking about just, you know, text in hand and how it all, being interplay with all of that. And then the third one was around, you know, the social, cultural, and stylistic concerns. And then thinking about critically analyzing texts and interpreting texts and interested in that. So just embedding it, just thinking about what was of interest to the team, and also seeing like, what's our, you know, our beliefs and our values, and thinking about curriculum trajectory, which, you know, not only expectations, but, you know, an aspirational vision of where we're going, I thought it was really valuable, actually. Thank you. Any other questions about one through 14?
I do, I have a question about the coach for the transitioning administrators. So my question is, is it common to have a coach for someone who's brand-new? Do we wait till they've been here? I'm just thinking of, we had a, did we provide a coach to our VP who left after a year, and we invested in that person? I mean, is it common to perhaps wait a little while and let them settle in and see what they might need coaching on before we provide a coach and make sure they stay?
So the, in this particular case, it's, it's both mentor and coach. So it's, it's a mentor coaching program you're seeing. The particular mentor that we're getting is, is really extraordinary in terms of what she's been able to do. We, we have, and so when Jennifer Spirely came in. And so when Jennifer Sprely came and knew last year, she had somebody, when Kevin Hanlon came and knew last year, he had somebody. And from the systems perspective, there really is some value in having an outside person to, meaning one does not report to be able to mentor and to be supportive in terms of thinking about what's going on in the region, and just a broader perspective. Um, so there really is a lot of value to that. I think that from a place of offering support for our induction process, it's really important. Um, and Jennifer actually personally reported, I'm sure she would not mind if I share, you know, in this particular case, the mentor that, that we are looking to be working with, that, you know, that person has rave reviews and was incredibly supportive. It is, I do believe it also is somebody who personally experienced an outside mentor in my professional field. So, um, when I was a principal in my former setting, that was one of the first things that happened. And I think that it's really important to be able to have someone who's sort of on the balcony looking at something, and to know that that person doesn't report back to your system about things, and just to be a thought partner and help you grow.
I mean, to be clear, I definitely agree it's valuable to them. I'm questioning the value to us before we decide if we're, you know, they're staying on board. I just hate investing in people that might not stay.
Well, I hear you, and I think, you know. And the, the, the plan is to make sure that we're creating a strong induction process where people feel they do report, and they have enough that they do stay, um, rather than being in a situation where they're not necessarily getting that level of support, which, you know, induction is very important. And we have it for teachers in the form of a mentor cohort. Maybe we have trained mentors for teacher, that's, teachers that are also supportive. And I do believe that we really need to adapt for administrative too. We have a really, um, a fairly administrative team. So being able to process is, um, I just think it's really important for, for that person's professional growth. And when we work together within a system, there's real value for that collaboration, and there's also real value for having expertise from the outside, which is why we have different networks professionally. And this is another layer to be able to support a new administrator.
So when you do that, do you, like, I, I know it's different from outside my business world, but when I have coaches for my team, we, the coach and my person and I sit together, and we discuss what, what they should be working on. And then there's a report every three months about how it's going. I give my feedback about how I see their growth, what their areas of opportunity might be. Is it the same thing, that there might be a collaboration with you or whoever they report to? I guess it won't be, um, Bill.
By design, that is happening with them. So there's a plan for what's being discussed. There is movement that's, you know, towards processing. There is not a built-in circle back to report on what was discussed, because it's meant to be a confidential sounding board. Um, what, what we can have is around, you know, if, if we were to reach out and say, hey, here are some things you may want to consider processing together. This is on the horizon. Um, but really, it's meant to be, um, the person who's the mentee is self-identifying areas where they need to process and they need support. And then we do know when they're meet, you know, that the process is happening. Um, but there is not a feedback where we're receiving their confidential discussion information.
Yeah, it's not about the confidential discussion. It's just that you get to say, here are some areas of opportunity. And then we see if they're, you know, I might think I need to work on something, but, you know, maybe somebody else thinks I need, I have other areas I need to work on. You know, and we're paying a coach to, to help them personally, but we're also paying them to help the school district. And so if I think your problem is leadership, but I'm self-reporting that my problem is, you know, public speaking, then we're not, you know, we're not helping the district in what we need our person to achieve.
So in other words, if I could add, what is the, how is the impact being evaluated? So impact evaluation is basically what I think Doreen is asking. How is the impact being evaluated? Is it, I mean, we could use qualitative means of doing that, but it's, anything like this that, and I, I, I see where Doreen is coming from, that they are investing money? If, 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 the looseness may not be, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's, it's productive, for sure, but how is that being evaluated, the impact being evaluated? Maybe something that we could look into. I mean, you could design that, because that's not our, our place, but we, we may need to know the impact evaluation of, of that kind of structure.
Yeah, what I might suggest, because, I mean, I've been at that intersection of different sectors in education and coaching, so I appreciate you endorsing the coaching. And I think it's, it's a really good question, but it's a double-edged sword. If we don't invest right away, there's, I think, a higher chance of leaving. And I want to get into past situations. The confidentiality in this sector does matter a lot, and it's right in the agreement. But I think in general, what we could do is, I don't see why, if, if the board approves this, I think we could go back to ELC, because they no doubt have had this question before, and said protecting the particular privacy issues, because I've seen this a lot within the, certainly the public head sector, is to say, how can you help the board understand the return on investment here, dare I say? Um, and I, I would urge the board to support this, because I think it's a better bet that this will be for the individuals named, a great way to keep them and, you know, and already, these two are already incredibly important to us. I'm seeing it. So anything we can do to, to kind of support that would be great. But I think it's a good question. I think, Melissa, we could go back to, I'm using the acronym, but Educational Learning Corp., and say, how do you help your other districts understand what the return on this while protecting the privacy?
Yeah, and I, I don't think, I don't think it's about privacy, but I think that.
Well, I'm just going to the, sorry, what the contract says. The contract's very clear.
Yeah. What, what I'm, what I'm trying to, probably, this is just me, but what I'm hearing is that there are, there's a way to measure impact evaluation on anything. So I think that it's not about privacy of what they talked about. How is the impact being evaluated? So if probably you could look into it. It's because with every, with everything, qualitatively, there is impact evaluation measures. And that's, I believe, what, it could be just a simple survey that shows that, you know, proficient, beginner, it, it, it's, there's, there's a lot of tools for impact evaluation of things like this. I don't think it's about the confidentiality, it's about the whole general impact. So I think, if I'm hearing.
No, thank you, guys.
Yeah, that's definitely one part, and the other part is just understanding that they're working on what the district needs them to work on, not just their own personal ideas of what they need to do.
Thank you. I, I definitely picked up on a lot of support in what you were saying, and I just, you know, want to reiterate, you know, it, uh, some of our job is to, you know, allow our administrators, and definitely the Bard thing, I don't know about it, but if our, if Josh Blum brings it to Melissa, and Melissa and Josh want it for six people, that sounds great, and I, I do like us to be supportive, uh, which is what I'm hearing from both of you for, uh, you know, a $3,000 item. It does catch your ideas, but it's for our administrators. We have a small team, like Bill said, so, uh, everything I'm seeing on this list looks, uh, well-thought-out and, uh, well-chosen. I'm ready to support almost all of it.
Any other questions?
Almost, wait, Jeremy just said, I'm ready to support almost all of it.
I wanted to leave some suspense.
So do I have a motion to approve items one through 14?
So moved. No, tomorrow's.
Sorry.
I'll be the sec, yep.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Melissa, did you get all that? All right. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Uh, six B, placement service for CSE and CPSE. Are there any questions related to these items?
Related to those numbers.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve these placements and services? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Moving to seven, personnel, um, and then seven A is appointments. Are there any questions related to the appointments one through seven listed in part seven A of the agenda?
I just, um, on, on Schedule B number five, there was one of the stipend amounts, and I don't have the exact, I'm going to ask that we can amend it to what the current contract amount is. It's for the middle school support team coordinator. I got an email right before I came downstairs that the, um, amount listed on the Schedule B was not reflective of the new contract amount. So it would be just like an amendment to, like, what, like, the attachment with the minutes will reflect the correct amount. It was like a typo. Unfortunately, I don't, I didn't, didn't have an opportunity to pull out the contract to give you that dollar amount, but, um.
Is it more of like what lane they're in, or it's an old number, but it's not?
Like, because we had just recently modified some of the, um.
Thank you.
Schedule B type positions, and it was like a rollover from the side letter increase. So the, um, the, excuse me, the HTA president noticed it, and he said, just, I just noticed I was reviewing it, and I, and that amount isn't reflective of the new amount. So, I mean, it would be corrected on payroll anyway, but we'll, we'll modify that document to reflect that. So it'll be noted in the minutes that way. And it's the middle school support team coordinator. So just that particular stipend amount just has to be updated.
Now that you brought that up, Maureen, I had a question about one of the items that was added for, to Schedule B, and it was for the senior alternatives. Could you just refresh my memory on what that role entails?
Sure. So the senior alternatives coordinator is the teacher, or it doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher, but the individual who coordinates and works with the partners outside the district to ensure that the seniors have, um, in the second semester, have, um, an internship kind of program for the last few weeks of school. And they provide, um, they're the, the person that's working to ensure that all students have something. Some students have some, and then, but they're still required to bring them to that person, and they're, need the contact information, they, you know, to make sure that everyone makes, um, does their requirement there. This current year, um, we, the high school administrators had run the program, meaning this last year. It really is a teacher stipend, and they have the rights to that position. And, and quite frankly, it runs much better when there's a person in charge of.
So I'm sorry, were you saying then that the high school administrators were previously running it?
No, ju, just for, no, 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 just last year, just during COVID, they didn't. So this person will, because there was so much going on last year anyway.
And was this person and this, the person who's being, who's the double agent? All right, thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve appointments one through seven with this slight change to be updated in the minutes for the next meeting? For that position. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Uh, everyone in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, the motion is carried. Uh, seven B, amendments. Do we have any questions related to amendments one through four listed in part seven B of the agenda?
I'm just wondering, like, the, some of the things, why are they amended? Is it like a, I understand the step change, but the deputy treasurer amended statement?
Oh, so, yes, so what happened was on the previous, um, agenda, the amount, I guess it had been copied over. It was incorrect.
Oh, I see.
It actually reflected like a decrease in what he was receiving from last year. So it was just, in order, our payroll always has to tie back to our agenda, so. It was actually picked up by the payroll person. They were like, oh, something must have happened where that amount wasn't updated.
Got it, okay.
Yes, that's just.
Thanks.
For that purpose, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to mention number 14 there, what, for current events.
I think we're on amendments, is it just one through four?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, not there yet.
Okay, pass that.
We did.
We did.
We did, I know, but okay, back, back there, I just, you know what?
Your president.
Just give them a shout out, you can give a shout out.
I'm going to give a shout out. My, this is my son's, um, computer, mine died. And, um, so everything shut down, because we have everything shut down at a certain time. So that's why I was busily texting at home, asking for permission so that I could see my screen. Um, okay, so that's why I'm a little.
The BOE meetings on time, if the computer shut down, we gotta go.
The behind and what I can see. Um, but I do want to give a shout out to current events. I'm so thrilled to see that, and, um, wish it could continue on even in the higher grades. Um, kids love it, so.
That's nice to hear, thank you, Alice.
Amendments, um, so we do, we do vote on the amendments, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Um, do I have a motion to approve amendments one through four?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. Seven C, leaves of absence. Any questions about absences one and two?
I, I have a question. The absence one is explained about what's paid and unpaid, and I saw the letter. Absent two, it doesn't say whether it's paid or unpaid unless I'm missing it.
We actually just got clarification on that.
Since, since, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so, um, it will, that was, um, part of it, we knew the person requested a leave, so we wanted to ensure that that was noted, because we needed to bring in a substitute. We do, um, we did get confirmation today that it will be a paid leave.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absence one and two?
Look, if I may, just an amendment to that. We, we had just some flexibility in determining, because it's, employees have certain protections.
Right.
And we weren't clear yet.
I know.
And we were able budgetarily to, oh, I can say it now, we're able to budgetarily afford either way. So we were, because we didn't want to have, so.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is carried. Uh, seven D, resignations. Any questions about the one listed? Do I have a motion to approve this resignation? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And the motion is carried. Um, moving to eight, approval of minutes. Any questions related to the approval of these minutes from our last meeting on August 23rd? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 23rd? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion is carried. Um, number nine, new business, um, BOE meetings, um, meeting topics for this school year. This is just a draft, and Dr. McPherson will introduce this.
Um, so, this is a, a document that we had sent around a couple of weeks ago. It's posted now for the public and all. Um, I, this is a, a, a structure and an approach that Hastings has had for a while. Um, we tried something like this in my previous district. It wasn't this well-organized, so I'm actually kind of very positive about what's here. And as several were getting our minds around it, I almost said, well, here's the course of study for the board this year, which is, can we plan what the work is this year? And, and let me just sort of kind of lay out where we're headed. We would hope that by October 12th, or at the October 12th meeting, you would finalize this. Uh, you have your goals working session on the 29th of this month. We think what you talk about in there will be pretty central to what's here. So now let me come back to this. It's probably quite clear to you, but let me just reiterate a few points. Uh, we layered in for each meeting, what is the business typically you have to do at that meeting. Uh, we also layered in, um, some updates we think you should be receiving. Uh, so for like it or not, the first of each month, we think you should be hearing about COVID-19. We didn't think both meetings, but that could change. You'll see construction updates woven all the way through. You'll see CINA updates woven all the way through. But then, based on already listening to many of you individually, because you and all, and, and then coming from the retreat, we began to plug in what we think will be some, what we might call priority or special topics that you do want to get to this year. That's where your board goals workshop's going to be really, really important. And that's also why we put an October 12th deadline on this for you. I mean, this is for you, but we're just trying to facilitate and be helpful. So for example, what do I mean by, uh, special topics here? If you look at October 12th, a special topic is finalizing this plan. Uh, if you look, more importantly, if you look at, uh, November 8th, there's a technology plan update, uh, presentation. There've been some very good questions about technology plan. We have to do that, but we, by having this as, and, you know, again, on the 12th, you'll finalize this, but you can then point, okay, I've got these questions, that's when we're going to be addressing this, and can, not just the night before, hopefully, because we would have, the Wednesday before that meeting, we would have that presentation ready for you. But you can begin pointing, uh, to what's going to happen. Um, we did discover today an unfortunate pileup, which we'll have to fix, and we'll wait till we get out of the workshop. But if you go to November 22nd and, uh, December 6th, in those two meetings, we have to fix this. We, a special report on social-emotional learning well-being. We think it's critical to the board. You hear that, we were picking that timeframe, because it'll be a bit, enough in the year. But that same meeting, and I. I don't think we can do both, both nights unless you wanna, excuse me, make it two nights. But that one night, you also have what we've called learning impact of COVID nineteen from last year. And we've put it late November because yes, we'll have assessment data, but we'll also have good qualitative data. But we'll have to juggle that because that's too much for one night. Uh, unless you wanna keep meeting into really the wee hours. And that's not fair to you all. On the sixth, we have a DEI update. That's a lot back to back. So that might want to get adjusted. But you can see we've begun plugging in what we think are gonna be some priority topics. State of the district meet year on the tenth of January. Um, now, key to that, if you go all the way to the right, it says include academic growth and performance update. Cause that's something you've been asking about. Well, if you're talking about the state of the district, we'd think a substantial focus would be academic growth and performance. So we see those as naturally connected. The meet year seems to be a good point. Um, then if you just go to the end of the year, uh, there would be a end of the year update on, of the status of the district. And again, that's academic growth and performance. So that's all the way on, on June twenty first. We also layered in executive sessions. Let me just flag those and then I'll, I'll stop. You have an executive session uh, coming up uh, tomorrow, which isn't in here, uh, that you've all signed up for and it's posted. But if you look into uh, January the tenth, it was a sense of having an early executive session with you on contract negotiations. Uh, and, and you actually, I think, have most of your contracts back up this year. Uh, three of them, you do. So it'd be important in that to have that early, early discussion just about what you're thinking, but then come right back a couple of weeks later with, and this is an area where by law you're, can easily go into executive session. And the thought was early, start talking with you about that. Um, and, and you can see then on March seventh, you would again have an executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. Um, and of course, layered into this very importantly is budget season, uh, starting uh, really early February, if not a bit earlier, I think at some point, which uh, for the veterans on the board, you know that that kind of takes everything over. Uh, for those who observe the board, you know, it kind of takes everything over. So it's important that in thinking about your course of study of a board, if I dare, that you have the whole plan. Um, so tonight we'll just introduce it as I have. There may be questions now, but I, what I like here is that you're gonna really get to dig into this at your goal session and modify it, change it. Um, some of the questions we've been getting from you in email, we can begin to see where to plug those substantial answers into. And I would hope that, that on the twelfth of October, you could say, here's the final, knowing it's gonna change, right? So transportation may now be a key topic that several months from now, you may want to say, we need an update on that. So let, let me stop. And questions, comments, or all the rest?
Just to thank you for that because, you know, I think something that's so important, there are these topics that are, you know, extemporaneous. They're very important, but there's never really a good chance to talk about them. And it's sort of, almost a sort of oddball to bring them up in singleton issues that get appended on to a meeting. But they're actually really important. They just don't have a, a time aspect that makes it clear that, you know, what order they come in. So I think it's uh, I think it's really valuable. Um, and I think it's going to, I mean, one of my frustrations as a parent for joining the board was how little discussion there seemed to be. And I think it's really a chance for us to, to talk more and to, uh, talk with a focus on, on, on topics that are, are, you know, hard to focus on in the meeting. So I thank you for that.
Yeah. I also want to add that, um, I'm, I'm sure this is not for now, but at some point, I know that whatever is being done is supposed to be student focused. But if we are able to sort of clearly align that to our students in a disaggregated way, that way it's really helpful. Like we had, we had community members coming in without concern. And sometimes we have to, with the, with the amazing work that Melissa is doing with all this social, emotional learning and all the differences of the pool of students that we have, I think that we should be conscientious with. Um, I know we are being, but sometimes sort of say it out because the community doesn't know that you are working with that framework. But if they don't hear the connection, then they think it's just about process instead of direct impact on their children. Yeah. So I'll just say that we should.
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Okay. So we'll continue on with that thinking um, in our board goals meeting.
Yeah. And just before then, we will plug in, I'll talk to Maureen and plug in when might be a good time for transportation as an update. Uh, but we'll, and, and then in the board goals, I will get your guidance on how to unpack that very crowded November twenty second through June, excuse me, I wish it was June, uh, this, uh, December sixth.
I wonder if the SEO is moved to that mid-year update.
Yeah. So we can talk about, that was an idea most.
Yeah, that makes sense actually. And um, I just want to give a shout out to Inette Koker, our, our director of school counseling. Um, he's been really focused there too. So I just want to recognize him. Great. Okay, uh, nine B, um, in-person or virtual BOE meetings. So just to make sure everybody is aware, the state has once again, um, said that boards of education are allowed to have their meetings virtually in an effort to lower the number of people entering the buildings and bringing in germs um, to the schools. Um, but it's not man, you know, it's either way, we can decide. So we thought it was important to throw that out to the group to see what people's thinking. We don't have to vote on it, but just um, discuss.
No, I, I'm nodding my head because I think that would be great. I mean, some, not all of the sessions, like executive sessions, I think we really need to be in person because we need to be fully, I mean, we need to be fully there in here, but just be able to feel and sense more than just talking. With the, the screens are not that great, but I, I think that, um, I don't know. I think if we have the opportunity to do that, it'd to be great because some of us can stay in our office instead of trying to drive crazily to get here. And.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, um, you know, I have a very strong preference for in-person. You know, I feel like it's just information you get just from being in the same room with each other. It's hard, it's hard. Um, so, you know, that, for me, I don't, I don't think there was any hard pressure about it, but I, I love meeting in person.
I also, uh, sorry, I wanted to say add one more thing. I also feel like we don't get rushed, like la- la- last, uh, we don't get rushed. It's late, let's go. Because people are able to sort of fully dip, deep into things that they really want to understand instead of feeling like, oh, probably I shouldn't say this. Because, for example, I had stuff typed out, but I'm, I'm thinking of the time, so I don't want to ask because I'm being sensible with time. So I, yeah, you know, so that's, that's my, uh, that reason for remote. There's no excuses.
Yeah. Allison, thank you for uh, putting it on the agenda or considering it uh, it's definitely a concern. Um, my children are too young to be vaccinated and uh, ninety percent's a good number, but it's not good enough. And I have concerns about any optional meeting. And I think the public has the right to come to any meeting, vaccinated or unvaccinated, without testing and wear a mask. But uh, if we're gonna consider doing optional in-person meetings, I think that's something that uh, might warrant some people's concerns. I already am exposed through my work. Seventy-five percent of my students are unvaccinated by choice. And it's uh, disappointing. It's disappointing that uh, we're having optional meetings that are exposing my children to the vaccine. And I know it's a volunteer and it's a public servant, but I think that's something we have to consider uh, for the core group here and any presenters that we have, uh, whether we want to continue doing this.
Uh, yeah, I personally uh, would agree with Alex. I very much prefer in-person. I think to Jeremy's point, if you're concerned, I think we can look at what the case rate in Hastings is or Westchester is. And if obviously if it gets to be too high, we can we can go to virtual. But until then, I, I feel that the best way to communicate is always in-person.
Um, in my estimation, I'm uh, in agreements with both Doreen and Alex. I have a strong preference, having experienced both the in-person and the virtual meetings last year. And I feel that it's a far superior experience in terms of how we actually have the interactions and hear one another out. Um, I also have, you know, a child at home who is too young to be vaccinated. So I fully respect, you know, the concerns that have been expressed. But I do think that, you know, districts last year, even pre- previous to the time that we were meeting in person, were meeting. Um, and I do think that we can take the precautions that we are. Our students are coming into school, our teachers are coming into school, our staff is coming into school. And I don't think that having meetings every two weeks is something that I consider too burdensome or too risky, that I wouldn't consider it to be um, something that's worthy of our time to be here in person and to, that, that's, I feel that very strongly.
Okay. I, I'm of the same mind as several of you. Um, I do feel like we know how to mitigate risk at this point, um, as evidenced by school continuing. Um, and if we come with masks and um, our, you know, have our space, that meetings are better in person. I, I think it is important to show the teachers and students that we also are happy to, to be here and feel that this is adequate. Um, and I, it's just better for the overall relationship too, I think, of digesting information and, and um, understanding the topics. That's my personal opinion. I don't think it has to be set in stone. You know, if rates skyrocket, um, you know, it's not necessarily um, best practice to be adding more people if that, if it becomes really crazy. So, you know, I would say open to re- revise, revisions if needed, um, way down the line. But right now, it seems just fine. Okay.
I want to, I had, this is with reference to vaccination. And so, since we are on that topic, I'd like to quickly probably ask this question. So um, vaccinated versus survivors. How is that te- the, the testing process that I think Doreen talked about, how is that being reconciled? Because both of them have, may have the antibodies. I mean, we know that it, it may get away and that's why there's a, um, push for boosters. Some, some people have, survivors are losing their antibodies. So how is that being reconciled? I was a little bit confused from a, from my background in medicine to just assume that like I, I just couldn't, it didn't make, I couldn't get the grasp on so, like, unvaccinated versus vaccinated. And then unvaccinated may be survivor. So how is all that data being reconciled?
Well, yeah, I think it's, is following the guidelines of the DOH and back up to the CDC, they're striking it very, one or the other. You're either vaccinated or not. Cause I think the issue of sorting out who is unvaccinated but has had COVID nineteen, that's what I think you mean by survivor, um, that you get into some, well, we have to deal in private medical information anyway. So.
Right, right, right.
I thought before I talked for once.
Vaccinated or unvaccinated.
But I, yeah, but I think it's, I think they're just drawing it one or the other. And again, I don't, I mean, you have more medical background than I do. So what I have to do is keep going back to, and Maureen's really, I, I have her on point in everything, if you noticed. You know, you know, so uh, um, everything on the non-academic side of the house. Um, the, uh, and by the way, we had a discussion about that today. Cause I'm, I, I, I worry about those who work with me who are like burning out. So I just want to say that. Cause if you watched everything she's dealing with, it's significant. So I just want to put that out there. Um, and I'm paying attention to that. Um, so, but I think to answer the question very specifically, we've just been advised by our medical and public health experts to vaccinated or not and work with, within that, if, if, if that makes sense. And.
That was just.
Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
If that's helpful.
Yep, that's helpful. So just to close out, um, the meetings in person or virtual, it looks like the majority of us are in favor of in-person, but open to revisiting should the need arise. But if kids are in school, we want to be here. That's the feeling. Okay. Um, moving on to number ten on the agenda, it's the second public comment. Not a, okay, there are no, no comments. Um, number eleven on the agenda, Board of Education comments. I'll open it up to you all if anybody has thoughts they'd like to share or questions.
Yeah. Uh, to the three Ms. Thank you, Melissa, Maureen, Melissa. Bill, thank you.
McHirsby's room with that. He could be a fourth M.
No, it's an upside down M. It's a W turned upside down. Uh, my comments, I just really want the, the community and the board to consider uh, that this year might be different and that this is a, this is a year where we already got a lot on our plate with the COVID management, COVID adjustments, the budget, the contract, construction projects, and of course, now insurance claims. So it might feel like a very different year. It's tough to compare it to any other years. This really could be a year for the community and the board to uh, take a longer term point of view and to really let our principals uh, adjust how they see fit, which is tough for us to do when it's in the news so much and we want to be involved. But uh, I wish our community and our schools and our three Ms. and an upside down M. All the uh, thank yous for your efforts and uh, see you in two weeks. Or on the emails every day. No, that's secret. Sorry, not secret, sorry. That's executive session. Thank you, guys.
Um, I just wanted to second, you know, Jeremy's uh, wish to sort of revisit the transportation issue. Because, you know, reading the, some of the emails that came through from those parents, um, you know, um, my sister has a son who has special needs and he went to read chimneys at the booster and then school in Connecticut. And the, one thing that struck me in one of those emails was just like someone talking about how hard it is for somebody who has those issues to, to, to get up early and to have to spend so long on a bus and to go through a day like that. And I think that, you know, I agree with you. I think it's something, I think those children deserve, um, you know, our best effort at, at, making their day as easy as possible. And not just to the students, but the parents. Because, you know, in that sort of situation, it's not like something that goes wrong, you know, just sort of disappears. It always gets pushed onto somebody else's plate, has something to do or some emotion to be dealt with. And that's a lot. It's a lot for anybody. So uh, you know, I'd like to revisit that topic in the interest of, of making sure we're doing, you know, the best that we can. And thank you all for all of the attention. We just, everybody. Thank you.
I want to recognize all the students. Just staying on, um, staying with us as much.
My job.
You got more than one, true. It's nice seeing you here.
I, I'm sorry, Allison, can I?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you, Dr. McHirsby, for recognizing that um, our three Ms., you know, need a little uh.
Do it for a singing group or something.
Need a little TLC. I mean, they, there is a lot of overtime happening here. It's right out of the gate. And um, so knowing that you recognize that and honor that and are, um, is so important to us because we can't function without them. Um, and that care to them trickles down to, you know, people they deal with too, because that means they're being treated that way. And then they want to, in turn, treat others that way. So big appreciation there. Thank you all.
Um, I just had one comment too, that I, I think that the, our community has, has done a great job of not inundating everybody with questions and comments and concerns in the past two weeks. Obviously, the busing issue is very serious, but I think it's great that the community seems to have taken a deep breath and recognized that like, okay, we gotta get through the month and then see how things go before we start like getting upset about things. So I, I think I'm feeling good about that myself. And then Maureen, I have a very specific but random question. Um, regarding the hillside construction, um, given like the situation we are in with COVID, are we designing that with windows that open?
Um, you mean the uh, the, the, the main room in particular?
Whenever, anything that has.
Yeah, so there are operable windows in a lot of the spaces.
I just want to make sure. Like before, before it's too late, if we could have windows there that are, that open fully.
There are, but in addition to that, there's also the, um, the air filtration systems in those rooms are being designed at like the highest quality. So the air handlers there will also increase the exchanges.
Yeah. That's good. But there's nothing like.
But there will be operable windows.
Fresh, open air from outside.
Yes. And there's multiple doors in the space. Um, I think one of the things, um, particularly this year.
particularly this year, where we have been using our outdoor space more and we know how to do it now, and, and we feel more comfortable in, in, in how we, even with the lunch space, because that, that main area has multiple doors that also, in addition, are open to the outside. So I think, although we'll still be following our security protocols, I think the days in which we were, um, more concerned about leaving doors open, you know, we'll be able to, um, ensure to have more open air today.
Yeah, and just in general, I think that this idea, you know, of taking, like, what we've learned and the best of, this idea of having the kids eating lunch outside, even post-COVID, next year, the year after, hopefully, we'll see a post-COVID. I think that's a great opportunity for, as a, as a very pro Waldorf school type of person, I love that idea that the kids are getting outside and, and breathing fresh air. Put on a jacket, it's great for them. So just something to consider as we go into the next years. But thank you for thinking about alternate ways for them. I think it's been great.
Yeah, it may be worth, and I can send you later this week, um, just you as a board clear on the Hillside lunch, um, because, uh, we weren't going to do it, and then, uh, Maureen and Joe went over and talked to Amy and figured out a way that it could happen. So then it was understood, oh, it happened all the time, and then that was just not possible, uh, because actually, we worked very, very hard to set up the inside lunch in a very safe way. All the right spacing, all of that. So it also, so it became clear that because, you know, the, the young ones, you, you can't just say run to your table, or you're going to have a mess, you know? So you got to line them up and get them there gradually. So we were looking at some situations where you would actually have a lot of wet students the rest of the day, just eat outside, when we know it's safe to eat inside. So that led to a modification of when it's safe to go out for recess, weather-wise, we'd go out and eat. Then we hit a sunny day, which you may have heard, and then there are the bees. Um, so then it became the question of what's the greater risk, bee stings or being inside. So at that point, made an adjustment. So we will be outside as much as possible, and I think the vast majority of the Hillside parents now understand, but it took a couple steps in the communication. Um, and if you get any questions, just, uh, resp- resp- you know, good respectful questions for sure, and, and you can re- redirect them to Amy or, if need be, to us, because we very much have tried to provide that. It, and we did survey, I should say, Amy surveyed twenty-three districts. None of them are automatic outside all the time for the, a couple of reasons I've just said. You know, that if, you don't want wet children all day, you, you, much more, you know, it'd be a problem. Um, and about half are not providing any outdoors, and that the rest are where we are. So we'll, we'll keep it going, but I, it, it, we took a couple steps to work through it with families, and I'm hoping they see where we settled in a, in a good way.
Yeah, the families I've spoken to have overwhelmingly supported it. I know there's probably some families that don't, but I'm not in Hillside anymore, but my friends who have.
You know, there's going to be differences. We all know. There's some who said, we want him, we want him out a hundred percent of the time. And we just had to politely say that it may be worse for your child's well-being to do that. And, and, and to Amy's credit, she just did a comparison. And no other district is having their elementary students just no matter what outside.
Is it optional?
Uh, it is, uh, it, well, some, not optional. I mean, when they're out, they're out because you've got to supervise.
Okay, got it.
Uh, but that also leads to being, I think, judicious in when is it appropriate to be outside.
Um, Maureen? This is a, a quick last question from me. Um, so in terms of the repair, based on the, on this whole.
Ida.
Ida.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is, is there, I, I mean, I, a, a lot of us been going to Dobbs Ferry, because I'm not sure whether it had to do with the structure or is it the, the location, but even our swimming pool, which is not the school situation, we, we find ourselves using Dobbs Ferry. I'm asking this in terms of the materials that we use. Is Dobbs Ferry using something of superior quality than we are because they are, they are tennis fields like we had the hit? So I'm just wondering, is this something that?
You know, it's, it's really just based on location, I think, you know, and just at, at, um, unfortunately, both at the, the town pool and at our location, just on the location of the site and, and the, being at a lower point in which, like, you know, just the kind of, um, yeah. So, so that, that's really, um, why we had the damage that we saw. And welcome.
I, I, just one other comment. I, I know it's not my job to talk about curriculum. I just had a quick question. Given the science is so strong and that the kids have been doing so many great things, it seems like it might be interesting, I'm curious if the teachers have thought of this, to have, like, maybe a, a cohort of high school kids who might be interested in climate change and the, the, you know, what happens with climate change, to really go and understand. Because, you know, we hear about Katrina, we hear about Sandy, but nobody gets to see it. It's so, like, outside of where we are. And this is a real example of climate change in real life that affects our community, and I think it would be a great opportunity for, you know, students, a cohort of students who might be interested, I'm talking about high school kids, to study it, because this, this is the job of the future, you know, and they can see it in their backyard.
Yeah, we're actually doing a lot of that.
Excellent.
Bishop Brownstein, who's one of the, you know, one of our best environmental science teachers, basically just wrote a thesis in the last week, I read, on that, on the, you know, climate change science and the reasons why it caused, um, you know, all the damaged door facilities. There's a ton of that going on. There's a ton of, you know, science current events that's being implemented into those classrooms. So that's, that's definitely some of the science teachers, the science department is awesome.
I love it. That's amazing. That's terrific. Thank you.
And the environmental clubs, too.
Yeah, there are a couple of clubs related to it already.
Yeah.
I've seen some good clubs.
That's great. Thank you. I'm so glad.
If you could solve it as well.
Just your senior internship, just add that.
Right, exactly. In two years.
You can go to any college you want.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Sylvia, bring us home.
Me?
Any comment?
I just think everybody's been doing a spectacular job. It really does do my heart a lot of good to hear Dr. McCursie give words of affirmation and acknowledgement to the community, because I do think that there's so much behind the scenes that happens that, you know, happens at administrative level that people are not privy to. And so I commend all of you for the work that you do day in and day out, and that people probably don't know about if they don't tune into these meetings. But you are seen and you are recognized, and I'm, it's, it's, it's really, uh, rewarding to hear that somebody says, I have my pulse on what people's morale is and their state of burnout, because I know that that is something you, all of you devote so much, and, and I could say that in a blanket type of a way of all of our staff, whether they're a teacher, a custodian, an aide, a driver, all of those people. We acknowledge you, and you take care of our kids, which is the most important thing you can do. So thank you. It's on my heart.
Sylvia always says it best, so we'll leave it there. Uh, do you have a motion to adjourn our meeting for September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.